At it being seven o'clock, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission. The first item on the agenda is citizen comment. Any citizen wishing to render comment, please step forward to the podium on your right or left. State your name or address and please limit your comment to three minutes. There being no one in the audience stepping forward, going once, twice. That satisfies this element of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is approval of the July seventeen Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve or amend?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Okay. All in -- any discussion? No discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. And I'm raising my hand to abstain because I was absent. Motion carries, the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan Capital Facilities Amendment. Do we have a presentation from staff?
Good evening. So, as Doug mentioned, tonight is the public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan Capital Facilities Amendments that we reviewed at your last meeting. And as you recall, the proposed amendments are to add acquisition and development of land for a public workshop, and then the second piece to expand the Juanita Drive project from northeast 155th Place to northeast 170th Street to reflect the walkways and waterways bond measure. So, at the suggestion of Commissioner Vanderland, we reviewed other elements of the comprehensive plan to assess whether the background information was too specific, and concluded that most of the background sections have fairly specific information, it's sort of a snapshot in time of the existing conditions, along with forecasts of future conditions. And it also, this background information, looks at sort of the level of service issue for the public workshop. This was the one that talked about employees, et cetera. We don't amend the background information on a regular basis. We usually do that comprehensively when we have to do our updates. So, we do not believe that if the numbers would change, that it would need a comprehensive plan amendment. It would just be an adjustment that would be made next time around. So, with that, the criteria to be considered for a comp plan amendment were included in your packet. And unless you have questions, that's the conclusion of my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions?
Question, just to thank you for following up on that.
You bet.
So, I think with that, we open the floor to a public hearing and citizen comment on the item before the public. Anyone seeking to render comment regarding this matter, please step forward to the podium on your right and our left, and please limit your comment to three minutes. Going once, going twice. No one stepping forward, we hereby close the public hearing.
Okay. So, the next thing would be for the commission to decide whether you're ready to make a recommendation. As we previously discussed, we're hoping to fold whatever recommendation you have on the CF Capital Facilities Plan into the CIP discussion that will be happening in September in front of the City Council. So, if you are ready to make a recommendation, that would be ideal. Or if you have questions, I'm happy to try to address them.
Floor is open. Does any commissioner want to render comment on the proposal? No? Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the recommendations presented by the staff.
Okay. Second. Thank you. Discussion? None? All right. There being none. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. All abstaining, please raise your hand and abstain, which I do because I was not present at the meeting. Motion carries, the recommendation is approved and put forward to the City Council.
Right. And then the last piece of this, these amendments are fairly minor, and the question is whether the commission would like to have a joint meeting to present your recommendation, or whether you would be wanting the staff to present that recommendation as part of the City Council meeting.
Discussion? Comment? Vice Chair? No? Anybody? Is there a motion to have staff present, or proposal to have the council? Okay. Do I hear a second? Second. Discussion of the motion? None? Okay. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Are there any abstentions? There being none. Motion carries. And so, the motion is forwarded to you for presentation by the staff to the City Council.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, I now will have everyone else who's here tonight for the second agenda.
Right. Next item on the agenda is five B, Critical Areas and Shoreline Update. Gap analysis continued. I invite to the presentation table the staff and their consultants.
So, there will be a PowerPoint presentation, and this is continuing the discussion about the gap analysis for the critical area regulations. We started this at your last meeting, and tonight it's continuing. And so, there are some new faces in front of you, which who are the consultants assisting us with this process. Amy Sumi is a project manager, so I'm going to let Amy introduce the rest of the team here tonight.
Okay. So, tonight, we brought Bill Leprod, who's an engineering geologist at Shannon and Wilson, and he's going to talk about geologic hazard areas. And he's stomped around, I think, many of the geologic hazard areas in the city of Kenmore, so he should be a pretty good expert tonight. Dave Klein is a hydraulic engineer and certified floodplain manager, and he's going to be addressing the frequently flooded areas and flood hazard protection regulations. And then Lisa and I are together going to cover the shoreline master program, and then some other bits and pieces that pop up in the critical areas regs and the shoreline master program, sort of duly, so.
Thank you. Your name again is Amy, right?
Yes, my name's Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Sorry, because I was absent at the last meeting.
Yes.
So, Dave, are you with Shannon and Wilson?
Yes.
Okay.
And Lisa Greeter is with Burke Consulting. She's a certified planner.
Welcome, Lisa.
Okay. So, just the agenda tonight, continuing from where we left off last time, we're going to talk about geologically hazardous areas. Bill will do that. Frequently flooded areas and flood hazard prevention will be led by Dave. I'll have a very brief statement about critical aquifer recharge areas, and I hope you don't have very many questions, because that's not my area of expertise. I have two slides. And then, we'll jump into the shoreline master program and talk more about public outreach and focus groups, and kind of where we go next. And if it turns out that we run a little long tonight, I just wanted to throw out an idea that Lisa or these folks here could, we could prioritize their topics, and then I'm coming back in the next several meetings, but we might jump ahead and go out of order a little bit, so that they can finish their material tonight. And, just a brief review, just again what I presented last time about the gap analysis. And the major point really is that your city's regulations are in fairly good shape. In order, those comments that are, those items that are listed on the PowerPoint, staff and public input, and then consultant experience with the city and other jurisdictions codes, generated the bulk of our recommendations and suggestions. A few other ideas came from your permit history, example projects, science, and some technical stuff. I think maybe geo-hazards and the floodplain issues, those might be where there are more technical, science-related changes that might be coming out of that. And then finally, the Department of Commerce and Ecology checklist. So, with that, we'll just jump into geologically hazardous areas of the critical areas regs.
Okay, great. Good evening. So, the geologic hazards, and there are many geologic hazards in the state of Washington, but the three that you have here are landslides, erosion, and seismic. And then the seismic breaks down into three others, which can affect the city of Kenmore, being faults, tsunamis and seashells, and liquefaction. And so, you have all of, I guess you could say, you have all these five within the city. And some of the reasons that you need, you need to update your, your plan are, number one, the Washington State DNR now has new landslide maps. After OSO, the state put $6 million into DNR's coffers, and they hired a lot of people. The first part of that, of the landslide studies, has been done already, and we use that already, and some work that we did for Brian Hampson. The second part is still being done. That was the deep-seated landslides. The, then the second part is the shallow landslides, and the state is still working on that, and they've promised that they will be finished this summer sometime. And then that will be incorporated as a map and guidelines for the city. The other big thing is the proliferation of LiDAR, which gives us so much more insight into landforms, and being able to spot these things in the landscape. And then, third, are the fault studies that have been done in the last several years. The most recent in 2008, in a relatively obscure scientific journal, but we, I know, I used it in Woodinville not too long ago, to great advantage. And then, it also shows that there is a linament, that being a line shown by geophysical evidence that would indicate that there is, there may be a fault going through the city of Kenmore. It's called the Kenmore Linament. So, if and when that is verified by, more by on-the-ground studies, trenches, that sort of thing, that needs, still needs to be verified, but there is a good, strong possibility that there is a fault coming through the city. And it's all part of the southern Woodby Island Fault Zone, which is about seven or nine, nine miles wide, coming from basically here at the southern end, and extending nine miles to the north. So, based on that, I went through the code, and I have several suggestions. First, starting with tsunamis and seashells. Seashells are just, is a sloshing of the, of the, of a lake surface due to earthquake somewhere in western Washington, or in, in Washington. Could be off, off the coast, with a, a deep, a deep earthquake off the coast, or any other seismic event. Whereas, a tsunami would actually be triggered by movement on the Seattle Fault, or on the southern Woodby Island Fault, that would actually displace water and send a wall of water across the lake. And I want to concentrate on the word "when." Say, when the city's maps indicate that the site for proposed regulated activity is or may be located within a potential tsunami or seashock hazard area. I quizzed the state geologist about this. I wondered why they hadn't done the studies, and he told me that they had originally recommended the studies be done when they were designing the 520, the new 520 floating bridge. And they didn't get authorized. They just designed assuming a certain high level of wave. So, the studies didn't get done. But, they're likely to get done sometime in the future, I would guess. It's just my opinion. So, if and when they do these maps that would indicate how much of a wave it could be created here at the north end of the lake, I think there should be something on the books. And if so, then the only, the only code that I could find that addressed this situation was Pierce Counties. And what they do is they defer to, to surface water, the flood, they defer to flooding, and therefore, you have to incorporate rules and, and codes about flooding. So, which, which makes sense. So, I would, I recommend that this be adopted, but of course, there's nothing to enforce it until we actually get some maps to show what's going on. The second one is regarding buffers from, from, basically from landslide zones. And I'd like to increase that buffer, basically because of what we've seen as some, some big whoppers of landslides, and not necessarily OSO, because that was profound. But, the Woodway landslide, for instance, in Snohomish County, whereas, as geologists, engineering geologists, and geotechnical engineers, we've been accustomed to thinking that increments of five and 10 feet over, you know, over decades, over a few or several decades, is what the, the slope chunks off at. And we were humbled by Woodway, in that it, it went back about 50 feet, all in one fell swoop. Unfortunately, the nuns had their building a long ways back, and so they weren't affected. But, I, I think, I would recommend that you move it back to 25 feet, 10 feet is, it's between you and me, and that's not very much. So, anyway, that's, that's my rationale for, for that. And 25 feet is, is still within, that's, 25 feet is still well within a lot of the codes that I looked at throughout western Washington.
Question?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just wondered, the geology is very similar in Woodway to here? As a general proposition to, to warrant, you know, basing it on, on their experience?
Yes. Yeah. Essentially, it's throughout most of Puget Sound, it's, it's clay overlain by sand, overlain by till. In some places, there's some, there's some sand over the top of that, in, in the central Puget Lowland. When you get north, things get more complicated. When you get south, things get more complicated, but, but the central part of Puget Sound area, that's, that's pretty true.
And you say more in line with other jurisdictions, so this is sort of the, the standard now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I got a question.
Yes, sir.
What kind of hill are, are we looking at a slope? And is it, is it determined by the slope?
Yes. Well, it's, it's, and I think, I think your regulations are 40% over, with a 10% over a 10-foot rise. So, you, it come up, it has to be a minimum of 10 feet. In other words, you can't get any little bumps. And it has to be at least 40%. Then when you hit, you either hit, you hit that place where it's no longer 40%, then that's out. Then that's out, then, at that point, then you start measuring back to 25.
Because I can see on the lake over here, there, where there's very steep slopes going down to the water, there's a lot of houses in that area.
Right.
And there's a couple, I think, lots there that, that have not been developed. Is that going to determine that they can't build on that?
Well, you can still, you can still get, if you read the last part of this, through, you can still get, you can still get a geotechnical engineer to work on it and figure out structurally how to, how to fit the house on the lot, and what kind of medi, what kind of mitigation would be necessary.
Is that because of the reasonable use exception? Are you familiar with that?
That, I don't know.
A landowner can, you, put a?
Maybe Lori could.
Yeah. I, I, it wouldn't necessarily relate to a reasonable use exception unless the whole lot was encumbered by the landslide hazard area. This is just saying that if you're closer than the recommended 25 feet, you have to have a geotechnical engineer involved if you're adjacent to a steep slope. So, it would mean that you would have to do engineered foundations, or whatever, so that you weren't putting the house in a dangerous situation.
It's not excluding development, you're saying?
No. The, the city has a reasonable use exception process for, for critical areas. It says if your whole lot is encumbered, then you have a right to put a single dwelling on it, as long as it's, you know, it's minimized, it's not a free-for-all, you can't do whatever you want, but.
Right.
And in this case, you would still have to have a geotechnical engineer take a look at it. I, I, I don't know if you're aware, but in that, that ravine between Arrowhead and St. Edwards, there was recently quite a slide in there. So, it's definitely an area where there's the potential for sliding.
Is that the only area that we have that problem?
No. This, the city has several areas identified, and the mapping is just getting better, as Bill mentioned, with the LiDAR and that kind of thing. So, we have a fairly good sense of where.
Yeah. In general, there, there are four general areas in the city where, where this applies. There's one north, there's one out along the shoreline, out by Arrowhead, another one in the ravine complex directly south, and maybe a little bit west of here, and then another one south and a little bit east of here, where the, you know, you essentially have four nodes that are, that would be, that this would apply to. And there, and there are a lot of houses in those areas. And there are some houses that are built on obvious landslides, not active now, but were built on, are built on things that were active in the past.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the, oh, sorry. No, that's all right. So, this is a question that came up from staff, asking me to, to look into third-party review, because many jurisdictions have a, have a, a way to have a third-party review. So, I looked, I looked in a lot of them. The best one was the city of Seattle's, their DPD. And essentially, it's saying that if the city's reviewer and, and the applicant can't come to a, an agreement, then the city may require the applicant to get a third-party review paid for by the applicant. And then that, whatever that person comes up with, the engineer or geologist comes up with, that's binding on the, on the applicant. And this is, this is pretty widespread, it's just that I picked, I picked Seattle, because it seemed to be the most comprehensive and succinct at the same time. So, any questions about that? Yes, sir.
Yeah. Who in the city makes that decision?
So, it would be the Development Services Department, and whether they would have, have hired reviewing geologists or geoengineer. I suppose it would be if that person and the applicant's professional did not agree, or if there seemed a concern based on staff review, that there was a problem with the report. This is, is pretty typical, that if there's a disagreement, then you try to get a more objective third party who may, who is not beholden to either party, to try to figure out what the, the truth of the matter is.
Who selects the third party?
I've seen it done only for wetlands, in Kirkland, for example. And in that case, there's kind of a list of third parties, and the third party is chosen, and then a contract is signed that says that the person is not working for the applicant, and is trying to do an objective review. Other cases, I think probably the applicant could propose someone, but again, the relationship is clear, that that person is not working for the applicant. It's supposed to be an objective review.
Thanks. But you said there's a list, so that begs the question, who makes the list? And then you said, the person is chosen, but it doesn't tell me who chooses.
Right. In that particular case, the city chooses off of a list that has been vetted by the city.
By the city?
Right.
And I've seen cases also where the, the applicant and the city has to come to an agreement on the person, who is the?
Well, that would be more neutral than the city choosing the tiebreaker.
Yeah.
I second that. So, I would like there to be some requirement for that.
Okay. Any more questions about that?
Any other questions?
Okay. And, and the, the fourth one has to do with emergency response. And that would be if something happened, particularly, I'm thinking of landslides during the winter, and you have to take quick action. And if you had to go through the whole process of permitting, it might drag out, and things might get worse, it might start to engulf other properties, it might threaten lives. And so, there should be an exception granted for emergency repairs during the winter, during the, the wet season. So, this gives the, the department a way to, to respond to that. There isn't anything in there. And I've seen this in action, and it works really well. People, contractors are in there the next week, and the thing gets resolved, and the damage to the property is limited, and the neighborhood is relieved.
Questions?
No.
Bill, what does this phrase clearing window mean? In the second line?
Oh, oh, the, the clearing window. Well, usually between, we usually think of it as between Halloween and April Fool's Day. You're not allowed to do any clearing or groundbreaking. Yeah, maybe, we could pick a better word. Yeah. Yeah. If, if you weren't sure what it was, then other people won't either, so. We'll, we'll make it a different wording. But essentially, ground disturbing activity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. And the fifth one is, Lisa.
The fifth topic here is, it's on, isn't it? Yes? Okay. Is really about policy issue. So, the city currently allows development that meets the critical area regulations for geologic hazards. But as the city's gotten built out, the sites that are left to build are tougher sites, have more constraints. And so, one of the topics we're taking a look at is, while it may be feasible from an engineering perspective, it might be costly, is there, is there a broader look in terms of what risk there is, or maintenance, or things that may come to the city later after a development is built, that then the city has to take a, a look at? Because more becomes known over time, because a landslide that hasn't moved for a long time may start moving. So, these are the things that the city's trying to take a longer-term look at. So, we've looked at some other codes, and some of them limit how much density can be transferred on-site from the constrained area to the unconstrained area. Some codes will allow that density that may not fit on-site in the unconstrained area could be transferred elsewhere, like downtown, let's say. What's not listed here, but is also part of the examples we provided in the document, are clearing limits, not just limits on slopes over 40%, which the city does limit now, but some cities limit clearing on slopes, you know, 25 or 30%. And some regulate lot size, so that as the slope of the property increases, the lot size increases. You'll see that in that chart there from Marin County. So, on the left, a slope is increasing, then on the right, the lot size is increasing. There's a number of different ways to get at the issue. The real issue is what's the long-term perspective, not just what's feasible to develop at the time, but what, what's the bigger view? So, we've looked at some examples, and we'll be bringing back some ideas for the city to consider.
Comment? Go ahead.
The last of the geo-hazard slides. Are there any other questions for Bill about anything else in the gap analysis? We just hit some of the high points, but if you have other questions on some of the recommendations or conditions in Kenmore now is a great time.
Yep. Any? None? Mike?
Yeah. A question on the last slide. What is the objective of the density standards here? Is this to protect the potential homeowner, or the city from future expense or cost? What, what are we trying to mitigate here?
Well, the city kind of already applies different densities in areas of critical areas. So, a lot of the critical areas have R1 or R4, sort of on the lower end. So, the city is trying to look at development potential in relation to the natural constraints. Density is also a tool to help determine character, have a consistent character of development. Here, what I think we're suggesting is, you know, the city is just taking a look at what's already been approved, and what may be approved, and determining, maybe the standards are fine as they are, but just that longer-term view, if that area that Bill was mentioning was already developed on a, on a landslide that hasn't moved lately, but over time, let's say it does move or change, then the city's maybe having to deal with stormwater retrofits. City may be, you know, having to take on more long-term maintenance or risk because of these developments. So, then it just means a closer look at, well, what is the development potential in these areas? Is the code working as in? City may be, you know, having to take on more long-term maintenance or risk because of these developments. So then it just means a closer look at, what is the development potential in these areas? Is the code working as intended? And it's not just, you know, that the most dangerous areas are limited, but are there, you know, is there a rationale to limiting how much development happens in these areas where, where the city may be taking on more than just the initial approval of the development?
Thank you, that's very helpful, and just a matter of self-disclosure. I lived in one of these areas, and we recently had a very similar problem.
Okay.
Where there was very extensive city expense to retrofit the water issues that came up after a development approval, where property had been approved for development, but then several years later, we ended up having some serious erosion and earth movement issues. So, and I know the city had to put in a hu- huge expense in terms of stormwater to manage that, so. Thank you, that's what I was looking for.
Okay.
Lisa, what's this, this box here, it says adjust density transfer onsite, adjust offsite. This relates to transfer development rights?
Right, so the city, I think especially in the R1 zone, has sort of a gross density, one unit per acre, and then has a minimum lot standard that's, that's fairly small, actually, because it's designed to get you to cluster on the portion of the property that's less sensitive. So, but not just for R1, but for R4, R6, so on. Want to take a look at, so for example, Woodinville is there, is one option. They say if your site is over fifty percent constrained, you can't put all of that density on the same site. And, and then Shalan, like I said, doesn't limit density being, you know, but it does say within certain areas, not just the forty percent above that are most difficult to develop, but they're trying to get people to do less clearing as the slope increases, partly for hazard purposes, partly for aesthetics, right? You don't want as much cutting of, of slope. So there's a number of ways to go, and we're just trying to take a more holistic look than just the definition of the geo-hazard and the buffer from it, but taking a broader look at, at development in these areas.
Well, what's the transfer?
The transfer would be, if it's onsite, it's from the constrained part to the unconstrained part. Offsite would be, I think this was done around Swamp Creek, where your R1 density could transfer to the R8 portion of split zone, but it also, you could get more density if you actually sold it to someone downtown. That was at least at one time, a part of the, the scheme.
So the constrained landowner gets compensation for the amount of the constraint?
Right, to, yes. So I, there's a, there's a policy choice there, right? Because the property constraints are somewhat known, and the value of the land should reflect in some way the constraints. But the city also has an objective of making sure that downtown is successful or other areas are successful, and to maybe go beyond the minimums of a critical area ordinance and say, let's try to minimize density in flood hazard areas or wetlands or geo-hazards, and let's put it where the city has more services available, where there's more transit and so on. So there, there's multiple objectives that the city could achieve with, with an offsite density transfer. Onsite is just saying, if you have the space-
Right.
And you meet these standards, you can do it.
So this is already in our code?
You already have- Yes, you have some ability to transfer offsite right now. The code, we noticed the code needs a little adjustment, because there's some places that say, go see this section, and then that section doesn't have, you know, what the headline said it would have. So there's some, there's some massaging that needs to happen.
So when does the owner of the constrained parcel get paid? When and how? Does he have to wait for a developer to take advantage of the transfer density?
Right, and, and I don't know if the city, I don't know if the city's gotten, or seen pri- there could be private-to-private-
Right.
-agreements. I don't know that the city has a bank set up, and King County has done such, such things where Issaquah and King County, for example, have cooperated, and some density on the outskirts of Issaquah is transferred elsewhere in King County. And they've set up a similar system between King County and Seattle. Bainbridge Island has a system, so some set up their own thing and some set up regionally cooperative things, banks, basically.
But does an owner of a constrained parcel go to the city and say, hey, I can't use seventy percent of my parcel because of the critical areas ordinance here? And I'd like to sell it to the bank, phrase you're using, and the city takes over?
So it's not set up that formally.
Right.
The system is not specified. So this is kind of like the mobile home park question and the TDR question, although it's dealing specifically with open space in critical areas, the more traditional approach.
Right.
So, all of the questions that you're asking are things that would have to be answered when we set up a program like that, if you decide that you want to involve a program like that.
Because Lisa's saying, we already have this program in our code?
Have the-
Yeah, we have the ability to do it, we haven't have, we don't have the procedures set up, and we haven't had anybody requesting it.
Right.
Yeah. Any other?
Well, I just, yeah, I, I was kind of following up on that, I'd like to know a little more, I'm sure there'll be more information coming out, the size of the market, because that came up at the-
Yeah.
-mobile home discussion about, you know, the, the, the market for the transfer development rights didn't seem to be robust, at least in Kenmore, so. I think that's a question I'd want to know more about, too, as this idea gets developed.
Sure, we can bring back information, and Woodinville, for example, just doesn't have a density transfer offsite for most of their residential zones any longer. They didn't feel like it was being used, and they didn't like, you know, the ultimate result. I guess what I should say is, there's more, and, and I mentioned some verbally, but the options really also include lot size or clearing or other standards that ensure that the city gets a quality development and is taking that longer view. It may, density alone may not be the only thing that we end up talking about here.
One of my concerns with this, and I think you alluded to it, Lisa, was that somebody buys this constrained parcel, they know what they're getting, they've already got all these constraints in the code. And it's not like they were burdened by any change in the code, which differs from what we were dealing with with affordable housing, where we were talking about the burdens we might impose on the existing mobile home park owners with new code provisions that require preservation. Now, they've really lost money out of pocket if that happens. Their expectations were really changed, were really undermined by those changes. But here somebody goes in and they pay what market value is for a constrained parcel, and then they get to go to the city and say, oh, I want money for the, to the extent that this parcel's constrained from development.
Or what, really what they're saying is, I want the flexibility to make sure I get at least the gross density I'm allowed under the code on, to the unconstrained part of the site. And I think part of the question there is that, in theory, works, but the city wants to take a bigger look in terms of, like, how many people are there? What is the layout? Does that work well, given what the city's experienced elsewhere in terms of long-term road maintenance and stormwater and things like that?
But the onsite transfer, I'm fine with. I'm thinking about offsite transfers. Doesn't that sound like a bit of a windfall to buy something, you pay market value with the, with all the constraints you already know about? And then you get this second swing at the, second bite at the apple to go back to the city and say, well, I want some more money here, because look at the constraints on this thing. Well, they kind of knew that when they bought it.
We don't want to invite, we don't want to invite speculation here, and that's, that gets really-
Or, or some kind of compensation for, for, for no additional taking or no division, additional burden on the property.
I think-
If I bought wetlands and came back to you and said, I want to be paid for the market value of developed wetlands, I think I'd be kicked out of, laughed out of City Hall, wouldn't I?
Why don't we bring you back some, some examples of places in Kenmore where right now the code theoretically allows for it, but as Debbie and Lori have mentioned, the full program has never been developed. There's portions of it on the books that talk about what the density credit would be, but the actual creation of a bank and all this other stuff hasn't come up, because elsewhere in downtown, I'm assuming, there's enough market development potential, and so it has happened.
Well, Lisa, you haven't been to some of these meetings. You've wondered why there's more market development going on here. We have all these density incentives around the city, but they're not happening.
Okay. Well, I, I think maybe if we bring you back the issues and options, pro, you know, clearing limits, lot size, onsite and all that. And then say, what, here's a couple of case studies of what we're talking about, then it might make it easier to, to talk about the pros and cons and where, where adjustments need to be made.
Right, and I encourage this, this, in looking into this, and those issues in this topic, so that's fine, I get that. Anybody else? Okay.
All right, next we'll have Dave introduce the flood damage prevention and frequently flooded areas regulations, suggestions and recommendations that we have.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight I'm going to briefly talk about two chapters in the code, chapter sixteen ninety, flood damage prevention, and chapter eighteen fifty-five, seven hundred, under the critical areas code, flood hazard areas. These two code sections have their roots and origins in the Revised Code of Washington, eighty-six sixteen flood damage prevention, and in the Growth Management Act thirty-seven, thirty-six seventy for critical areas code. And the reason that I mention this is that there's been a conversation to potentially consolidate these two codes, and it would be important to keep those linkages and clarity if the city decided to move forward in that way. So on the next slide here, a lot of the frequently flooded areas are, they're, it's, it refers to the maps that are developed by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and their flood insurance rate maps, firms is the term that a lot of folks use. The effective map for the city of Kenmore is dated April nineteenth, two thousand and five, and FEMA has recently with the, King County issued a preliminary revised flood study and maps on February first, two thousand and thirteen, and has taken public comment on these maps. And they will be issued here in the future, the date is to be determined. When I looked at the two maps, there are some differences, but I would not say there's major differences. It's minor mapping corrections and adjustments, so. But that will affect some properties, and the, these get updated, you know, periodically every about ten years. So it's, it's something to be anticipated. The two primary areas that are under regulation are Swamp Creek and the Sumamish River. And they are both mapped as Zone AE, and Zone AE means that there's a calculated flood elevation, so there's a model, and they, that's how they generate the delineation, the boundaries of the map and the floodplain and floodway. You will at times find in other jurisdictions and other effective maps, Zone X's or Zone As or things like that, and those mean that they're approximate or they're unmapped. That doesn't mean they're not floodplain areas, it just means that the study hasn't been performed. So the city may actually have some of these areas that there are, there might be flooding, but aren't currently mapped. And that may be something to think about when we're looking at the code, that it's just not, right now we rely on the mapped areas. So, moving on, there's, I think, the other presenters have mentioned, there's a few things that need to be cleaned up, just clarified, definitions consolidated, references, you know, corrected and things like that. But overall, the, the, the code is fairly clear. However, there is one kind of driving regional environmental issue that has come into play that I'd like to talk a bit about tonight. In two thousand and eight, NOAA and the National Marine Fisheries Service issued a biological opinion to FEMA for administering the National Flood Insurance Program with respect to the Endangered Species Act. And so essentially what this says is that you, the, the administration of that program can and does have impacts and effects on endangered species. And given that, NOAA laid out a series of reasonable and prudent measures with their BIOP, and with, a lot of those have to do with code and, you know, local codes and ordinances, and how you would update your ordinances to account for and accommodate for these environmental impacts. FEMA essentially gave each of the communities, the participating communities, three options, and you'll hear a lot of floodplain professionals call them doors. So door number one, two, or three, maybe they're referring to, let's make a deal, I'm not sure.
Old you.
I'm old enough to know-
There you go.
-who Monty Hall is. So, but the three doors in, in summary are the model ordinance, so FEMA developed a model ordinance that you can adopt. It's fairly restrictive, not, I am not aware of too many jurisdictions that have adopted it outright. There's door number two, which is to incorporate similar language from the model ordinance into the other code sections of the city, the critical areas frequently flooded sections, and, and the fish habitat and wildlife conservation sections. And then the third door, which is a case-by-case permit review. And currently, the city is operating, like many others, under the case-by-case review. So, that's, that's the current condition. To address this going forward, we feel that it would be reasonable to incorporate a few language items that are part of the model ordinance recommendations, not all, just a few, to get you moving in the right direction. And the first is for the, the code purpose in sixteen ninety, and this may be consolidated, but is to encourage the adoption of more effective measures that protect natural and beneficial floodplain ecological functions. So when you look in the federal regulations, natural and beneficial ecological floodplain functions is a stated purpose of the National Flood Insurance Program. So this would just be aligning your code with the federal regulations. And what that does is it kind of trickles down into other sections of the code where you might create these linkages for evaluating environmental and ecosystem impacts. And the benefit of this is that by protecting floodplain habitat areas, you are, one, limiting and reducing flood risk to life and property, while at the same time increasing the benefits for ecological floodplain-related systems. So you're kind of getting a multi-benefit here, so reducing risk to the, the, the public and increasing benefits for habitat. Moving on, the second code section that we feel you need to create a linkage is to, in chapter eighteen fifty-five, seven hundred, this is the critical areas frequently flooded code section, and there's about five sections in there. And they're a little bit repetitive, they talk about the floodway, the flood fringe, the floodplain. And we were thinking there that you should include this linkage that talks about fish, an allowable and permitted alteration of the floodplain is fish habitat enhancement, ecosystem restoration, stream and wetland mitigation projects as allowable alterations. And the reason for that is, if you are going to be a, let's say, a property developer, and you go in and you want to modify your floodplain or the floodway, it would, you need, it would be nice to have a way to mitigate for that. And right now, the code doesn't actually allow for mitigation. So this just, you know, gives some flexibility to the city and the developers and the property owners to make a modification and then have a way to mitigate for that modification. And so that the, the linkage is by creating a cross-reference to section eighteen fifty-five, five hundred. Amy and I talked a bit about this, and it's the fish and wildlife habitat of importance areas. Because you, any sort of mitigation that you would do or restoration, you would want it to be in line with that portion of the code. And did, I hear your question here, or, okay. So, in the critical area section, creating that, you know, allowance for alterations for habitat mitigation and restoration, and then linking it to the fish and wildlife critical area section, is our recommendation. And then just finally, in kind of circling back on one of the overall actions that the city is considering, is this combining of the codes. I mentioned that it's linked to the RCWs, and I think that it's doable, but it would take some, a bit of effort to go through this to make sure that everything is covered. And one of the things that I think that would be beneficial is reviewing the, a potential combined code with what the FEMA has issued, it's called the FEMA BIOP Programmatic Checklist. And so it's essentially their model ordinance with common code sections that you can just go through and say, yes, we're going to add this, or no, we're not going to. And that would line you up with this environmental requirement for the Endangered Species Act. And so I think that would be a useful exercise, we have not gotten to that point yet. It's just more of a recommendation, if the city is interested in moving forward with the combining, I think that would be the appropriate time to put the, on the side there and review the FEMA programmatic checklist. And then one just final recommendation, similar to Bill, he pulled out a Pierce County code. He pulled out a Pierce County code. I also pulled, the Pierce County code is a good example of a recent updated flood hazard code where it's integrated into a single code, so that might be another starting point to look at that code. And the reason that I went to Pierce County is, as a certified floodplain manager, we have our professional network, society, and we get together with all the floodplain managers every year, and one of the leaders in our industry came from Pierce County, and he kind of pushes the envelope on, hey, here's how the floodplain standards and regulations, and he used the county as an example to get these updated and current, and so then you can rely on that, you know, as kind of the industry standard and where things are headed. So that's all I have today.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions?
Yes, Mike.
Going back to the previous slide, question for you. The mitigation that's, that habitat enhancement and restoration, is there science out there or is there something published that staff, I'm assuming would be making this decision, would rely upon? Is that something that gets generally referenced in the code? How would you go about determining that a proposed enhancement, yeah, was in fact beneficial?
Well, there is, I listed in my report, let's see if I can find it here, the, a few best available science references, let's see, and the question is, yes, there is best available science to support that. The one that I found that was fairly recent was, it's the Task Force for Natural and Beneficial Floodplain Functions in 2002, and it was a Senate committee that performed that for, you know, nationwide. And then within the state of Washington, there's a number of guidelines that I listed in my staff report that you could use here, and I do think it would be beneficial to further link, like what type of floodplain alteration activities would be acceptable. So a common one is if you fill in the floodplain, you just scrape nearby to offset the volumes, and it's called compensatory storage. That's a very common, and I think it's in your own code, it talks about compensatory storage, but explaining that clearly, what that is, and then you may have other standards, riparian plantings, connectivity of the floodplain, you know, channels and streams and large woody debris, these are all pretty common types of standards that you could refer to. Washington's Department of Fish and Wildlife has a lot of habitat restoration guidelines, ecology has guidelines, so we definitely have science and guidelines to refer to.
Well, thank you. What I was trying to go toward here is if you were a developer looking to do a development in the floodplain, a way that you would be able to access this information or know what would be acceptable.
Right.
Early on, so that they could do the planning and not have to worry, not have to go through a lengthy process later on.
Right, and so lots of times when we're working on a project, we refer to DFW standards because they will be providing the permits, and you could do the same, and maybe even in the code they'll mention what those standards and then some acceptable alterations were.
Yeah, we've added a couple connections in our Critical Areas Code sections, specifically naming a few of those WDFW guideline documents and their recommendations. So there's a little bit of a linkage there in our current proposed gap analysis. One thing I wanted to add, too, just to explain a little bit more about the importance of linking to the fish and wildlife habitats of importance, is that when jurisdictions are going through door three and doing the kind of case-by-case review, that requires the middle of some sort of a study that would talk about what your development activity is in the floodplain area, what the impacts might be on the listed fish species, et cetera, et cetera. But right now, the way the code is set up, there's no, if you're in a floodplain but you're not in a wetland, you're not in a buffer otherwise, there's nothing to take you or trigger a requirement to prepare that study as it's written. So one thing we were talking about, and I mentioned this a little bit last week in looking at the fish and wildlife habitats of importance, is maybe floodplain specifically would be something that could rise to that level of being a habitat of importance. It's certainly important, and there's plenty of science about that. Or we've got, like, listed fish, obviously, they are already habitat of importance, but I think it's not clearly stated that it's not just the waterway that they travel through day in and day out, but it might also encompass those floodplain areas, too, that could be occupied by fish and flood events. So some sort of resolution to that, I think, would be really helpful so that applicants know that, how they're supposed to address and deal with their requirement to examine implications for ESA of their proposed development in floodplains.
One big source for listed species are the recovery plans. So each basin has a recovery plan. So in the Sumamish River, there's an approved recovery plan that was developed by King County DFW, the services, and in there they list the action items for restoration, and I think you could link that way and just say, whether it be a recovery plan or an updated basin plan or a habitat recovery work schedule, and they have a four-year work schedule. And if it's one of those projects, maybe it's not even onsite, it might just be a mitigation by looking at another nearby project.
Thank you. That was exactly what I was looking for, some way for a developer to be able to go and say, okay, here are the city's priorities, and here are the sorts of things we are likely to look favorably on in reviewing your permit application.
So you're not completely blind.
That's right.
Like throwing ideas out there and wondering what they're going to say.
Let's not waste a whole lot of time on a study that nobody, really interests anybody.
Yeah, I think we could easily actually refer to some of those documents, and those are in the Critical Areas Code as well, maybe as the flood hazard. The city's shoreline restoration plan is another great place to go for specific priorities, and those have strong linkages to listed fish and habitats. So I think there's a number of tools out there.
And what is this, projects, are we talking about developments or dredging for, just to get through the river, or what does it apply to?
For floodplain developments?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, so what would trigger the code is if you're working in a mapped floodplain, so whether you own property or, you know, let's say you have, what would be a good example, let's say you have a home or structure that you want to add to in the floodplain, that would trigger, under the code, you're in a mapped floodplain, and then you would be regulated and need to answer these questions. Typically, from just the, I would say, the older floodplain codes, you would just need to demonstrate that you're not causing a rise in the floodplain, or if you were, then you would do compensatory storage. It was kind of just focused on floodplain only for flood elevations, right? But what FEMA said is, well, but some of those floodplanes might be important habitat for listed species, so you have additional evaluation, it's a habitat evaluation that you have to add on to that, and then understand your impacts. So maybe, you know, adding a garage into your grassy area on the side of your house isn't the best example, but maybe if you have to add a driveway across a stream or a channel that's in the floodplain might have more impacts, and that might be more related to what we're talking about here, where if you have a bigger impact, then maybe you need to look at restoration or mitigation from one of these other plans. So it's, I would say that it will be an added requirement for the property developers and owners, but if you don't include it, I would say the practical implication for the city is that you're going to be open to other challenges, appeals and legal, you know, potentially lawsuits, I don't know, but claims that you're not meeting the environmental requirements, you know, the current environmental requirements. So it's a balancing act. I really think that if you develop the code in a way that gives you tools for evaluation and mitigation options is the best way, because we've worked on a number of jobs where the developers and the proponents are trying to do the right thing, but there isn't a code, you know, a sentence in the code that says, this is allowed, you know, even though the federal agencies allow it, it just, the code hadn't been updated yet, so then it causes a lot of heartache and more work to allow those types of actions. But I would say that what you're looking at is if you have a property that's in the floodplain, you're going to be looking at it now for more than just flood elevation impacts, but what does that mean for habitat?
And there's a, oh, go ahead.
That was a good explanation, but what if the city wanted to dredge the Sumamish slough, would they have to comply?
They would have to comply because it's an action within the floodplain and the floodway. I think dredging, right, is below the ordinary high, so it's going to trigger a lot of codes, and in that case, you would already, it's a big enough project, you would be doing a biological assessment which would cover that, that would already take place. And so whenever you're in a big enough project that you trigger a BA, this is covered, you've met the requirements.
This law sort of fills in the gap between the actual waterway and projects happening in it and the floodplain area. So if you're dredging in the river, you're going to be dealing with fish and wildlife at the core, you'll have an actual federal nexus directly via that permit requirement. That will kind of be the driver for your Endangered Species Act consultation, and this sort of captures those other things that happen in upland areas that otherwise don't have any kind of a federal nexus, except that it falls under the umbrella of the National Flood Insurance Program, and therefore there is some risk to the city in particular for handing out permits for people to do things in the floodplain when there's a potential effect on listed species. So, and I think, an example, we worked on a project recently in City of Everett, it was a big new development right next to the river in the floodplain area, and with various calculations of what the actual impact was and how much of the site was actually in floodplain, they did just a riparian planting plan, and that took care of that particular one. I don't think that would have done it if it was, if it showed there'd be a giant rise or anything, so this wasn't a compensatory storage example. City of Carnation has been doing this for quite a while as well, and we can maybe look at what their code is, but they routinely require applicants in floodplains, and they have a lot of them, to prepare a habitat evaluation plan for, you know, anything from a house to a soccer field or a green, all sorts of things. And most of the time, especially in urban areas, it's not going to have any kind of an outcome that's really going to change the project, but it's going to make you be a little more thoughtful about it, maybe you have some mitigation associated with it, but many times you won't, just depends on the site-specific circumstances. But if we can take a look at the Habitat Management Plan requirements that you already have, see how those sync up with FEMA's, or, yeah, FEMA's got a document that's called a Habitat Evaluation Procedures or something like that, that's very specific on what they're looking for in those habitat evaluations in floodplain jurisdictions, just see if there's any gaps there, but otherwise, you might already have the tool you need. And one more thing on that front is the, at any point, I guess, FEMA could come and ask the city for its documentation of how did the city, right, and like, where did you have applicants do X, Y, Z assessments, and where are those and what do they look like? So that's sort of, I don't know if that's happened yet, but.
Well, and just as an example, they have for no-rise administrative compliance, and they have done an audit, but in the future, it may contain environmental components. So things are changing. FEMA's still kind of working their way through this, too, you know, learning about how to administer the finding and the measures and work with the communities to, you know, upgrade their codes and get this process working.
All right. Anything else for Dave? Thanks, Dave.
Any other questions? I think for Bill and Dave might.
Yeah.
If there's no other questions.
Right. Anything else for Dave or Bill? All right, thanks.
Okay.
Both of you.
So we've got just a brief discussion of critical lock for recharge areas. That is one of the five. Brief discussion of critical lock for recharge areas. That's one of the five critical areas that's specified in state law. In your current code, you don't have any regulations for this particular critical area because, so far anyway, they're not present in the City of Kenmore. So no CARAs is what we call them for shorthand, have been designated within the city. We've also looked at adjacent jurisdictions to find out if any of the actions that you're taking in your city might affect neighboring critical lock for recharge areas, and have found that that is also not an issue. And you don't currently use groundwater for drinking water at this moment, and who knows what the future may bring, but you're pretty comfortable right now where you are, not having critical lock for recharge area regulations is legally fine. However, the city does generally have a responsibility to protect groundwater quality under state law, so just sort of as a precautionary measure and to give yourselves a tool to use in case there is some future development that does affect groundwater, whether it's for drinking water or not, or it could be future drinking water, we thought it might be helpful to have just a very brief, couple sentences of code that allows the city to ask for an assessment of a project's impacts on groundwater, and just in case, I don't know what the scenario might be where it would come up, but it would just allow you to do that if you find that you need to. And you can see in this little figure up there, the green areas are areas that are determined based on different geology and other factors to have slow permeability. So the city, and most of the city is green, and then yellow is moderate permeability, and that just reflects that your likelihood and potential for having like rapid impacts on groundwater quality from a particular development is relatively low unless you're like direct injecting something into the groundwater. But it's still, there's potential risks depending on what sort of future development you have. We provided in your gap analysis a few examples of some jurisdictions that have kind of this just-in-case code, basically, that something similar could be included in your regulations if you were so inclined. And, yes.
Yeah, I had a question. I'm sure this isn't the, you know, final language that we would consider, but potential risk and may require seems kind of vague. Can you talk a little bit more about, you know, this assessment and what it would require and what, you know, sort of criteria would be involved?
I can talk about that a little bit, and then I can, I can dig up more information, we can provide more in some follow-up documents, and if necessary, I can bring our hydrogeologist who prepared the analysis, and he can answer more questions. But potential risk to groundwater, if you look in state code, there's a long list of potential pollutants and industries that might, through their activities, generate those pollutants, and that those pollutants might leave the site and enter into the groundwater. So things like, classic ones are dry cleaners, gas stations, auto repair places, those are the types of uses that historically have resulted in quite a lot of groundwater contamination and ecology, Department of Ecology spends a lot of time and folks spend a lot of money cleaning those up. So those are the types of projects. Is, in terms of an additional assessment, that would be, there's various levels, and we could provide that information in the code, but like a level-one hydro geoassessment might just be kind of like a desktop study that looks at things like, what is your geology, what chemical might your site actually produce, and then kind of do a little bit of study and find out how or if it could reach the groundwater, and then what the impacts might be, and then recommend measures for containment or that sort of thing. That's probably as far as I can take this. But if you have specific questions, let me know, and we can bring Chris Allen in.
Just want to learn a little more about how this would work and what the criteria are, and I'm sure you'll have more, just a little more detail about how this actually might work in practice and who it might affect.
Yeah.
You mentioned some, you know, some examples there. And when you say a proposed project, is that any like new development or substantial renovation of an existing structure or?
I think it would apply, or it could be considered for new developments, and there'd be, it wouldn't be like a single-family residence, it wouldn't apply to those types of uses. I think it would strictly apply to certain classes of, and maybe Lori or Debbie can speak to zoning, but certain classes of uses that actually have potential to generate these types of chemicals.
Okay.
In the code, I think in the RCW or the WAC, there's a very long list, very specific list of these different chemicals that you would need to think about. And I don't, do you have anything else to add to that?
I don't think I do, because given the kinds of uses that you were talking about, it seems to be a broader spectrum. It's not that we could just say industrial or manufacturing or light manufacturing. I mean, it may be that light manufacturing could fall into that category, but then again... But then again, it seems to me that we'd also be looking at the, not only the use, but whether groundwater is an issue.
Right.
It's kind of the two pieces together.
And to some degree, when you do your SEPA checklist for a proposed development, some of the answers to the questions in the SEPA checklist might generate the city to ask more questions and decide whether or not a more specific hydro geological assessment is warranted. But the SEPA is probably a good sort of first filter for those types of projects. And then also, I think specifically identifying certain categories of use or modification.
So I'm a little skeptical on this one only because, I mean, I am certainly in favor of protecting groundwater and avoiding toxic substances or hazardous materials from entering the, risking entering the groundwater, even if we don't drink from it at this point. There's a lot of law on this already. There's federal law on hazardous materials and cleanup requirements. Department of Ecology has a lot of laws on this. And then their primary enforcement agency, I think, in the state under its own, not just Environmental Protection Act, but MACA, the other environmental laws. What are we really adding to this by requiring, the city imposing these requirements? Aren't the private parties who want to do anything with the land going to have to satisfy a lot of laws before they can do anything anyway?
I'll find out the answer to that question. I don't know the answer.
Scott, you've dealt with this, haven't you? Yeah. I've seen a lot of it in my area of practice where it controls the value of the property.
Right.
There has to be, I mean, look at what's going on at Lake Point. They can't dig a scoop of soil for a long time until you satisfy a lot of Department of Ecology requirements.
Right. I'll find out and we'll bring more information back on that specifically. Okay. Great. I think we're ready to jump into the Shoreline Master Program. Any other questions before we completely leave that and talk about the SMP anymore, critical areas, regulations, wetland? We're going to bring a lot more information back in upcoming meetings as follow-up to our last meeting and then to questions that came up today. But if there's anything else.
We're good to go.
All right.
So in doing the Shoreline Master Program review, we used the Department of Ecology's periodic review checklist. And so that was Appendix B of your materials. And we had lined last time that most of the changes, required changes are few and minor procedural stuff, definitions, that sort of thing. We talked last time that under critical areas regulations, you're going to be updating to reference the latest ecology manuals, state or federal manuals. Same here, parallel requirements under the Shoreline Master Program. There are a couple of things that are optional for the city to consider that may be appropriate. One is that a while ago, the legislation was changed so that if someone does a restoration project and it would have the effect of moving the ordinary high watermark further landward. And otherwise, you would grab more property that would be subject to a shoreline permit to kind of incentivize restoration without that being an outcome. They basically said, you don't, even if you have a shift in the ordinary high watermark, you don't grab the extra parcels because of the restoration. So that would apply whether or not the city chose to put it in its Shoreline Master Program. It would just be sort of a convenience that it be included. So if someone's coming in with a restoration, then it wouldn't have the effect of having to amend the Shoreline Master Program to bring in the additional parcels that would lie in the boundary.
If somebody did something that raised the ordinary high watermark.
Moved it more likely.
Yeah, moved it waterward.
Moved it landward.
That means there's more surface water, right?
Right, but then the shoreline management area is 200 feet from the ordinary high watermark. So you'd be going, so one example I know is in Everett Marshlands, where they were talking about breaching the dike to do some wetland restoration. So that would have had the effect of increasing the area subject to the shoreline management jurisdiction area. And so there's, they were, you know, talking to the property owner saying, well, if we do this restoration, it wouldn't have the effect of having more parcels subject to the Shoreline Master Program just because you were willing to be part of this restoration effort.
You'd still technically be within shoreline jurisdiction, but it wouldn't add like, it wouldn't have an increased regulatory burden is the, how that would kind of work. So there wouldn't, yet, so the permitting requirements or other standards that would more specifically apply to properties within jurisdiction.
Probably an example that would fit here for like Lake Washington is someone removes a hardened shoreline. That could change where, you know, where that.
Yeah, a bulkhead.
That would be something the city would like to see or, you know, ecology would like to see. And if it were accomplished, wouldn't necessarily be more of a burden for those, you know, other lands that might get slightly pulled in.
The problem I'm having, getting a grip on this is, this is the opposite, I think, of what most developers want to do or property owners want to do. They want to create more usable land. You're saying, who would remove a bulkhead unless they had to?
Well, there may be reasons why they want to or need to for other purposes. And in doing so, you know, it doesn't penalize someone whose property wasn't part of shoreline jurisdiction and now is. So, I mean.
I'm okay with this. I'm just trying to imagine the scenario that you're describing and I'm struggling.
On Lake Washington in particular, there's been a lot of energy putting, put into incentivizing and providing tools for property owners who want to restore their lake shoreline. So it's sort of a growing trend that, not just because for habitat reasons, but for aesthetics, for easier access. You don't have to like fall off a bulkhead to get to the water. You have a nice beach. So there's a variety of reasons that people.
Sounds like an expensive.
It is expensive, but.
Hobby. I really like it to look natural down there like it once did, but that sounds to me like it would incur a lot of unnecessary expense.
It'd be voluntary, those are voluntary examples.
An example would be if you had a stream and you wanted to widen it out.
Meander it or, yeah.
You don't lose your buffer. Is that?
Right, the shoreline buffer, well, I guess really what it is, is the 200-foot mark where you're taking a, you know, you have to apply the shoreline management rules. Someone who wasn't in that 200 feet but now would be, they don't have to get a shoreline permit because of this restoration action that happened right along the stream.
And does it apply to streams as well?
If they're shoreline water bodies, so like Swamp Creek, it would apply to.
All the way up?
And the Sumamish River, only as far as it's within shoreline jurisdiction. And then after that, it would just be your regular critical areas regulations that would apply. One of the things that we talked about last time was that we added a provision to, and maybe there's other ideas we could add too, but trying to remove the disincentive for people to do restoration for like removing streams from pipes. And suddenly then they have 150-foot buffers. So similarly, I think there, it would, actually it's a good idea to try and introduce some sort of a mechanism where people could introduce meanders and other sorts of complexity without like throwing the buffer onto their neighbors or, you know, taking over their house. So that's a good idea, actually.
Yeah, it is a good idea, yeah.
Yeah.
But Amy, the definition of the shoreline jurisdiction is a pretty fast-moving body of water. It's not just a, it's rarely called a stream, right?
Yeah, Swamp Creek is a shoreline.
Right. There's only a few of them.
And Sumamish River and Lake Washington.
Right. For all the wetlands we have, there's not much shoreline jurisdiction.
Well, all of the wetland that's in the floodplains of these water bodies are part of shoreline jurisdiction too, so.
Well, what about, like in the park over here at St. Edward's, they've got streams coming down. And let's say you had a stream and you wanted to, you know, expand it or, you know, put trees around it so it's got shade or whatever. And then you don't use, lose your setback.
Right. So yeah, that would be an example of a stream within shoreline jurisdiction that's not actually a shoreline water body, but is still subject to the Shoreline Master Program. So in that case, the kind of general regulations that say, and we would need to add that, that if you meander or do other restoration activities that push the ordinary high watermark outward, that you wouldn't have a increased regulatory buffer burden.
Yeah, I got an example on the golf course over here that there was a stream, a culvert. It was a culvert and we opened it up.
Yeah.
And then they said, oh, you can't do anything with 20 feet or whatever it was. We got punished for doing a good thing. I mean, and that cost us a change of a design on a whole. So it hurt us really badly. And now we will never do that unless.
I think you've given us cause to kind of, in addition to what Amy mentioned for the pipes, pipe streams, see if there's other opportunities for that.
Yeah, encourage restoration without suffering a penalty.
This is probably off topic, but you know, because we do have these floodplains, I'm thinking about like Lions Creek, Swamp, the tributaries that come into Swamp Creek. You know, when we have those big, huge rains, I have a friend who lives on Swamp Creek and it pretty much wiped out their bank, just kept eroding the bank that their house sat on. And I have a friend in Lake Forest Park that sits on Lions Creek. And when that big rain came through, it changed the course of the creek.
Right.
And they couldn't do anything about it at first.
Right.
So, you know, you think about things that are outside the property owner's control and then you'd want to do some restoration to prevent any more of your bank from getting.
There, there are a couple mechanisms, so that's a bigger than City of Kenmore issue, once that happens.
It's probably state.
You get state and you get the Corps of Engineers and other parties involved. But if there are, and if you have good documentation to show that it wasn't a long erosion over time and suddenly it alarms you, but it's just been like inches over decades. But if it is a big event and it wipes out like, you take 20 feet of your property, then there are mechanisms that will allow you to kind of restore some of that lost land area and put the stream kind of back over where it was.
Yeah, the problem is it affects people downstream.
Right, yeah.
So you wouldn't think it would be that way, but I know in both of these cases, it was a really hard restoration because of what the study showed would happen downstream.
Right. Yeah, and that's just adding stable, like depending on how you do it, if you add stabilization, that's changing the flow, you got more velocity. So unless you throw wood in and other things to sort of, you know, slow it down and add roughness elements.
Even when they did this restoration of Lions Creek as it came in front of Town Square, there was, I mean, that thing took forever to happen and it worked because they had the right people involved in it, but.
You have to design them carefully, thinking about the size of the material so it doesn't just all flush in the next event down into your neighbor's property.
Exactly, yeah.
And you have a variety of things to consider, but.
Plus, you're not going to move both away.
Yeah, the highways. Oh yeah, you could, fossil did it.
I can actually remember, and this tells you how old I am, where there were just two lanes going through Lake Forest Park. We lived out here, but you know, my dad commuted into the city. And now you look at what's there and.
And it's going to get bigger.
Probably. More bus lanes.
Sound transit, yeah.
We should probably talk about the other bullet, which will probably engender some discussion. Is the other thing the legislature did was to say that if you have an existing single-family home, even if the buffer that you apply would go past it or through it, your house as it is is conforming. The city has the flexibility and its non-conforming rules in the Shoreline Master Program and has a decent set. We're just going to take another look, as Amy also will later describe to you. We're suggesting that you make some changes to the buffers on Sumamish River to be more like the custom approach you have on Lake Washington. So I think we'll come back to this. But it does, this legislation is an optional thing. The city has some elements of it already and I think we're going to head towards this direction so that ultimately you'll get a better outcome and you'll still kind of recognize the existing condition that's there.
So who's the? You will get a better outcome.
Well, I think, you know, if someone makes an addition, let's say, you might ask for some enhancement on the little buffer that's left.
Okay.
And they'll still get to do some kind of an expansion. I think it'll become more clear when Amy describes some of the suggestions for the buffers themselves. Just want to say like the legislature was listening to concern when the SMPs were first being prepared and trying to state clearly that since a single-family is one of the preferred uses on shorelines, that existing single-family could be considered conforming where it is, not move it, that sort of thing. I think you'll see that we think that concept could apply to non-residential uses as well, where you have some existing development. So I think it'll just become more clear when Amy moves along. Just to say, it's in that appendix with a bunch of other legislative changes. We've gone through it. The city's kind of gotten partway this direction already. And I think with some of the other work that Amy will present, it will kind of reinforce this concept.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions before we move on? Okay. So the use matrix, this is a little bit of a global comment. And I think this is something that staff is interested in doing. But your use matrix or your modification matrix in the Shoreline Master Program, which identifies all of these different uses, and then it says whether or not in each environment designation, if they're allowed or conditional or prohibited outright. There's, I think staff's preference would be to take another look at what that list is and sync it up with your actual land use zones and your land uses so that there's a lot better crosswalk between something allowed in the master program and maybe it's allowed in zoning, maybe it's not allowed in zoning. And there's some like broad categories in the use matrix in the Shoreline Master Program. But then there's some very specific things that are allowed or not allowed in the zoning. And it just kind of makes you a little bit psychotic trying to figure out what's allowed on my particular property when you have to bounce around between zoning and the use matrix. So if we can kind of sync those up a little bit, it'll make for a longer use matrix. You'll have a lot more, you know, rows. But I think it'll be a lot easier for applicants to figure out what on earth they can and can't do. And it also solves the problem a little bit, like in the matrix, just on the example, you can see there, there's a lot of like P2, X2, there's codes, there's multiple things going on. And if you break those down further than the need for having all these like sub-notations, some of that will go away and you don't have to check zoning, check the matrix, take a look and figure out what all those little footnotes mean. And it'll just be much more simple and much more clear. And also allow for, I think, great, well, just greater specificity and greater consistency with your own land use and comprehensive plan. So that's my spiel. I don't know if you want any questions about how that works. I don't know that there's any downsides other than you have a longer use matrix, but I don't know that the length is really a factor and certainly doesn't interfere with people's ability to use it. It might just take more time to go and figure out and have fun with the zoning and the uses and the designations, but.
No questions?
Okay. All right. Okay, so a little bit more on the use matrix. Here's kind of an example of a different way that we could break out one category into a couple categories and solve some of the problem of having lots of footnotes and solve the problem of having extra conditional use permit requirements that you don't really need. So for example, on this highway, street row use, in your current matrix, it has a conditional use for all of those and all of the environment designations, conditional use permit. We think that it would work better and was maybe more consistent with your intent and just kind of how urban areas evolve, if we only required a conditional use for new highways or streets within shoreline jurisdiction. All of these are only within shoreline jurisdiction. But that otherwise, if you were repairing, replacing or expanding an existing highway or street, that it would just be permitted outright. That would prevent you from, if you need to expand a highway or a street and you don't have to go get a conditional use permit. and you don't have to go get a conditional use permit and demonstrate that this is the best place for the expansion of your road and it's not like way over there. So it removes some weird criteria and hurdles and process that are just not necessary for this type of a development. And the similar sort of way of dividing could be applied to a variety of other uses, not just highways and streets, but teasing out repairs, replacements and expansions from new features, I think could go a long way towards reducing unnecessary conditional use and then also improving some clarity and letting you be a little more refined. Question?
Yeah, I just had a question on the expansion. Is there any limits to the expansion? I mean, this may be a little farfetched, but say Bothelway went to, you know, eight lanes someday.
Yeah.
Would that be subject to a conditional use permit? I just wonder if there's any.
There are limit on it, what expansion.
Yeah, I mean, that's farfetched, but you know, say a road is doubled, that's affected.
You would still need to go to the actual regulations that talk about what different requirements there might be on expansions. And there's probably going to be, and I'm sure there are right now, requirements for demonstrating the need for the expansion and that it's sized based on projected demand. You know, those types of things would be common, commonly evaluated. Probably an expansion like you're talking about would also require an EIS and who knows what else, so.
So it's covered under other.
And other processes and reviews.
Okay.
Yeah, but it might not require a conditional use permit, but chances are it'll require lots of other stuff and lots of public process.
Great, thank you.
So kind of, I guess the question too is just whether this is an idea that you like and that we could continue forward with many other uses and trying to tease out these types of distinctions.
Exactions?
Okay.
Just a thought, I had some same concerns as you did about what does a repair, replacement? What's the?
Definitions?
Yeah, what's the definition? Maybe a wording change or something along the lines of repair, replacement, expansion without significant impact.
One way we could look at it too often is it's typically within the current right of way. So sometimes the full right of way isn't developed yet. So that might be another thing, expansion within an existing right of way.
Where you don't have to, and there's no acquisition involved or those types of things.
At least in my mind, what we're looking for here is yes, certainly, let's make this simple for simple repairs, replacements and whatnot. But we want to distinguish between those that could have a significant impact on use and on the community from those that would just be.
Well, in this example, we could break this down further and have repair and replacement permitted. And then expansion of some features could be conditional use in certain environments, like in the downtown waterfront, you know, who cares? Or maybe, maybe you do care. But in the natural, like that should be maybe a conditional use. Because that's got a lot more ecological functions and want to be really a little bit more thoughtful about how you expand a highway or a street through a natural area. So it's kind of, it's kind of a lumber or splitter problem. Some people are lumper, some people are splitters. I tend to like splitting.
I like the approach, don't want to see us.
Go crazy.
More and more sections here. But if you could give some thought about it, there's a simple way to word this in a way that would allow us to be able to differentiate between those where we're. It may not be in eight lanes, but if it's two lanes and all of a sudden you're getting into a wider impact on a neighborhood, you're condemning homes or something like that. Maybe there's, is rules, maybe there are rules out there that would prevent that. Maybe not be a good example. But I could envision that there may be impacts that we couldn't anticipate in a repair or replacement that.
One idea is maybe we could link it to your transportation improvement program or, you know, those, because those have already got a lot of public process and I think they've been through planning commission and or council. So there's linkages we can make to, I think, tighten that up. Not just for transportation stuff, but think similarly about other uses where we might want to do the splitting out.
Amy, could you explain the exception for in-water uses a little bit?
In-water uses?
It's part of the land use.
That's what was in your code right now. I think that they were thinking about like bridges that might have pier foundations and they didn't want this, I think that in your use matrix now, there's like a separate row for bridges.
Okay.
And that's another thing that I, I think it would just be, you've already got aquatic on there as a conditional use, so I'm not sure that bridges is a necessary, it's part of a roadway street, goes across, so anyway, going off into the weeds a little bit, but that's my thought. Piers and docks, so in this, there's a lot more information provided in the gap analysis, including, I think it's appendix F, maybe, a whole new set of potential suggestions for pier and dock regulations. But following a little bit that model that we just talked about of doing more splitting, we make suggestions to further break down piers and docks and recognize a few more distinctions that are just captured in that one-size-fits-all, very long row. So right now, there isn't a distinguishment, there isn't, it isn't distinguished between like residential versus public versus commercial very clearly. We have docks, piers, boat launches, buoys, floats and boat lifts, all in one row. And those are very different, unique and have very different impacts and are differently appropriate or not appropriate on the different shorelines. So trying to tease that out and have separate rows for those, I think is really important. And then, you know, further breaking down boat launches into motorized and non-motorized. Motorized boat launches being more acceptable on like Lake Washington or in downtown waterfront, but not being something you'd want to see in your natural park. But a non-motorized launch that allows people to, you know, drag a kayak into the water, those types of things could be appropriate and compatible with a natural environment. So, I don't actually provide the matrix, I don't actually provide the matrix. Maybe I can refer you to the actual page, the gap analysis. Let's see. Okay.
Page fifty-seven in the gap analysis.
If you wanted to look at page fifty-seven and fifty-eight of the gap analysis. And we don't need to go through each one of these or we can. But that's kind of our first blush thoughts on how you might break down public and private docks, residential versus, single family versus the larger community ones that might be associated with a condominium complex or a mobile home park, those kinds of things, as well as dealing separately with your public and commercial facilities. Watercraft lifts as a separate item. So you can kind of see just as you look down the list that right now, as it's written, there's an awful lot of stuff in the urban conservancy environment that would require a conditional use permit. And I think their public facilities, I think warrant a shoreline substantial development permit, not a conditional use permit in the urban conservancy environment, for example. And in the natural environment, there's some things that even a conditional use permit is maybe like, you don't even really want to go there. Like a single family resident, residential dock in the natural environment maybe isn't appropriate. So any questions or thoughts on this breakdown in general or how we've tackled it?
Anybody? No?
Do you have a question?
Go ahead, Mike.
So you have proposed recommendations for each one of the breakouts. Are those based on equivalent jurisdictions or how do we come out with? Because when they were lumped together, in some ways and almost definitionally, they seem more lenient, right? For something like.
Seem more lenient?
Lenient in some ways, like putting all of those items together and then having a conditional status. As we get more granular, we then have some Xs. And is X prohibited?
X is prohibited, so.
So I'm just wondering where those values come from.
Yeah, so it's a combination of what is the purpose of the environment designation. So thinking about natural and what's appropriate there ecologically, being very different from downtown waterfront. Also trying to think about your zoning, so looking at that as well so that you wouldn't have a marina in a shoreline residential, single family environment. So that kind of thing might, there might be an X there for marina in shoreline residential. In some areas, it will, there might be more Xs. But I think that those, we tried to, and this is open for discussion, are consistent with your zoning and or other environmental considerations. A good example of where things get less more lenient is like with the urban conservancy again, where right now, everything is a conditional use permit. And I think for, there was a couple park projects that had public, new public docks. Was it Squires or Rhododendron Park or one of those, where they had to go and get a conditional use permit for this really nice, actually, I think the picture of it is right on the screen, that really nice facility. And they had to get a conditional use permit for that. And as well, there weren't, in the regulations, there were not a lot of design standards or dimensional, you know, any sort of guidance on how that thing should be sized and designed. Especially considering the fact that this is Sumamish River, which is very different than Lake Washington. And the regulations seem to be more geared toward a Lake Washington kind of typical dock and pier design, where you've got, you've got a lot of distance before you start running into opposite banks or interfering with navigation along the water. And you've got a whole different kind of nearshore environment that you're dealing with, as well as flows. Am I answering your question? I have.
You are.
Okay.
And I want to just jump in here a little bit, just by way of background. Shoreline conditional use permit is very different from a city conditional use permit in the zoning code. So a city conditional use permit is an administrative decision that's made locally. A shoreline conditional use permit actually has to be approved by the Department of Ecology.
Right, yeah. It requires a public hearing, it's a much lengthier process, yeah. And then in the end, ecology could deny it or add more conditions to it. So to be avoided, I think, when at all possible and when it makes sense. But yeah, each, I think each of those, this is just our first stab at it and we're open to discussion on all of these, whether something's prohibited or permitted or conditional use. So it's just our first crack at it.
I'm glad you brought up the Department of Ecology because as I recall, the last time we went through this, this is one of our, was one of our big stumbling or barriers that we had to get through. So it was very difficult to tease out where and when ecology had to have been involved. And I think you're right, to the point that we don't have the requirement to do that. I remember we had a discussion particularly about what things we wanted to do along the lake, particularly in terms of boat access and paths and whatnot. And that, that whole discussion was very difficult because of that, so. I'd be, I'd like to see, I'm glad you're going to do this review and it'd be interesting to see how that might improve our flexibility in the future.
Great. Okay, so that's that. And then this is another, sort of another example of further splitting up a very general category called fill, grading, dredging. And let's see what page that's on. It starts on page fifty-eight, so it's just right below the docks. And it continues on to page fifty-nine. And I think right now, we've got fill separated out from grading and dredging. But otherwise, we're kind of stuck in that situation where filling is one line and it's got Ps and Cs and multiple designations. And then you have to go to the footnote and then further to the actual regulations. And after doing that, I wasn't entirely sure myself what permit might be required. So, and also, this is an important, I think this particular one is important, thinking about Dave's presentation about the biological opinion and compliance with requirements to give special consideration to anadromous fish and then the floodplain issues related to listed species. So consistent with the code, with the shoreline master program guidelines, which do say some specific things about these. And then also just trying to think about what makes sense. In Kenmore, we split up upland distinct from in-water fills. And then further broke down upland outside of a floodplain as being just allowed across the board versus upland inside of the floodplain, in which case, we suggest in a few environments where a conditional use permit might be appropriate there, but permitted still within downtown waterfront. And then showing separately that in-water restoration, any kind of fill related to restoration. And that happens quite a bit, actually. And you can get into some difficult design issues if you can't fill to do a restoration project. And so that's permitted across the board. And then as required by the shoreline master program guidelines, the WAC, conditional use is required for any in-water fill that's not restoration related. So I think that trying to tease that out helps you with demonstrating your compliance with the biological opinion and sort of the FEMA issues, as well as solves the problem of having these multiple codes and having to go chase down footnotes and other regulations to see what is required. Any questions about that? Sure. Oh, I think that's the downtown waterfront designation. Yeah, so those are your, oh, I should have put the, those are shorthand because they wouldn't fit in this table very nicely. But DW is downtown waterfront, SR is your shoreline residential, UC is your urban conservancy, it's your parks. And then N is natural and A is aquatic. And aquatic is specifically the Sumamish River and Lake Washington. And Swamp Creek does not have an aquatic. It's just whatever the land designation is, is applied to the water itself as well.
So I just suggest maybe.
E? Yes, I agree.
And Amy, what's the difference between aquatic and shoreline residential, for example?
So aquatic is very specifically just the water between, it's the water word of the ordinary high water mark. So the lake and the river are aquatic, but the adjacent shorelands are shoreline residential or downtown waterfront, those are upland designations.
I see. So might the aquatic affect things like buoy systems?
Right, right. And that's where you'll see a number of like Xs or, you know, something else. It's not necessarily that it's prohibited, but you're not going to propose a buoy in the downtown waterfront environment, it would be in the water. So there's a little bit of that. And to some degree, again, this is based sort of on thinking about zoning and biology and that sort of thing. But there's also a few very specific things in the shoreline master program guidelines that say conditional use for any disposal of dredge material inside of a floodplain or channel migration zone. So that's why you'll see Cs across the board in that row. But as a general rule, we've tried to minimize conditional uses because they are rather burdensome. Any questions on our approach to that or is that too much splitting?
I think it's good to have this kind of flexibility targeted.
Okay, and so the next kind of big section, and this is where we have appendix F, if you wanted to dive into the weeds and the actual dimensional standards proposed. But basically, as I mentioned already, the design guidelines and standards on width and length and materials and that sort of thing are pretty much a Lake Washington focused. And the Sumamish River is very different from Lake Washington in terms of what an appropriate dock or a pier should look like. To just put two examples up there, you can see in the Lake Washington example, it's kind of hard to see, but it's very much perpendicular, like go out, 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 away from the shoreline and then have your, you know, your structures where your boat might be, where you're out in the deeper water, you know, fifty, a hundred, however many feet offshore. The Sumamish River, because you've got a bank not very far away from you on the other side and you've got folks trying to navigate up and down the river, it's more important because you also have some pretty decent flows, nothing crazy. But it's by design and necessity, you need to have your dock, your overwater structure more parallel to the shoreline. And you only go out far enough so that you have your, your overwater float or dock so that it doesn't end up grounding on the substrate. And you actually can moor a boat. So you want to go just deep enough so you can put your boat in, but not so far that you're blocking navigation and also exposing yourself to hazards related to like large debris that might come downstream or, you know, somebody else's boat shooting down the waterway. the waterway. So, in the code, and let's just see, I don't know if you want to go through that, but there's a ta, there's a lot of guidelines in the code and they're kind of in bullet format, and we tried to turn this into a much more usable table. And so, where things are with the Lake Washington and the Samamish River as columns on the top and then different categories of standard along the left-hand side. So where the things are in common, then you can clearly see that like, okay, grading is required on all overwater structures, whether it's Lake Washington or Samamish River, but where there are differences in how far out you go or what the different widths or lengths of the components are, then you've got your very clear columns for each of those water body types. In the current code, there also isn't anything that provides standards for boat launches. And so we tried to introduce some specific standards for boat launches to sort of help guide applicants, and those are based on like State Department of Fish and Wildlife and just sort of some best practices for boat launches. And there's, to some degree, it's like a little bit of a hierarchy where this is preferred and, you know, go on down the line, but it lets you look at what your site is and sort of make a judgment call or use engineering to figure out what's the best method for the particular place. We also wanted to include a little bit more specific mitigation guidance that's consistent with the state and federal agencies. Right now, there's a very specific mitigation requirement, I think for public docks or for commercial, it's just one particular type of overwater structure and it had a very specific mitigation requirement, but then it was silent on all other overwater structures or in-water structures. And then we also wanted to introduce a threshold for minor repairs, so that at some degree of modification of an existing dock, you don't have to suddenly comply with the standards. And in some cases, it would require that you actually rip out your dock and put in a whole new one because you can't meet the current standard. So I think we suggested up to like seventy-five percent of repair of like the decking or pile replacement or those types of things would be considered minor repair. And then, once you get over seventy-five percent, then you might as well think about compliance and you're essentially rebuilding the entire feature at that point. And so, yeah. So those are some of the, sort of the key provisions that you'll see in appendix F. One of the things, again, I think, which we've said a number of times for other uses, is trying to minimize the need for variances. So, we've got built-in where we can, different flexibilities for length or width based on specific needs or site-specific considerations, like if you need to be longer than, than the standard because you don't have sufficient depth to moor a boat, you know, sort of build that in there so that you don't have to get a shoreline variance. And that's similar to a shoreline conditional use permit in terms of the process and public hearing and ecology approves it, and there's some unique criteria for variances that are specific to shoreline master program, and some of those standards can be hard to meet. Same thing with the conditional use, they can be a little tricky. Do you want to walk through the appendix F a little bit more in particular, or do you have specific questions about it?
Well, I'm looking at the clock here, it's like eight fifty-five. We usually try to wrap things up around nine, so it's-
Okay, maybe we should-
Really about how we budget time-
Okay.
At this point.
Let's, maybe we should jump to, oh, this is good stuff, though.
Well, we don't have, I mean-
I think we could maybe at least hit the highlights and then when Amy comes back at the next meeting-
Right.
And go into detail, so I think we just introduce and not-
Okay, all right. This is a really fun topic, though. So vegetation conservation, hitting the highlights. So, we talked a little bit about this last time and this kind of follows up, that we tried to make more universal for all buffers within the city, allowances for trails and other sorts of public access improvements that are designed more with the site, a site-specific approach rather than flat, you know, one-size-fits-all setbacks and buffers, you know, trails need to be a hundred and fifty feet away, those types of things. So we tried to make that more universal. We also modified the Lake Washington shoreline buffer management standards, so again, this is, there's a lot of emphasis in the SMP on Lake Washington, but we thought that those things were perfectly good for the Samamish River and Swamp Creek as well, and so we wanted to make that more broad. And also to all environment designations, I think it was written for Lake Washington and for the downtown waterfront environment, these flexibilities. So we've expanded it to all the shorelines and all the environment designations. And there's sideboards on that, it's not a free-for-all. Focusing again, like on water-dependent enjoyment uses, public access. And then, for all of those things, there's still a requirement to minimize the impacts and mitigate, you know, if there are adverse impacts. Any questions about that one? Pretty much covered it last time, it's just making sure these two things are consistent and we don't repeat ourselves or get ourselves crosswise. Shoreline buffers, so as I mentioned, only Lake Washington has those use and designation-specific buffers, and we thought that it would be really helpful and appropriate to have some specific buffers for Samamish River and Swamp Creek, which right now, as written, you've got a flat hundred and fifty-foot buffer. And as you can see just from a couple of those images that I included on the slide, the, a lot of your development is much closer than a hundred and fifty feet to the Samamish River. So we propose a couple different buffers based on a combination of the zoning with the environment designation. So in this lower zone, I think it's the Mobile Home Park, I think it's a twenty-foot buffer, and we, these are just sort of starting points, but we, I base that off of what the existing condition is, looking at Google Earth and measuring, like where are the developments actually? And again, we're trying to decrease the amount of non-conformity, so all of those developments right now with a hundred and fifty-foot buffer are non-conforming. So, to the extent that the code recognizes existing uses as conforming, it kind of solves the problem a little bit, but even better would be to even reduce the need for that and give folks more flexibility by setting the buffer based on what the actual existing pattern is, so that you don't end up in that kind of weird conforming, non-conforming land.
As a reminder, you know, our standard is no net loss of shoreline ecological function, so we're trying to kind of tailor this a little more to what's there.
Right, yeah.
And there can be some incentives, you know. Better vegetation buffer and maybe-
Yeah.
You know, a more efficient lot pattern or something like that.
Right. And the, the Lake Washington buffers, and we kept this as we proposed, the Samamish River and Swamp Creek, but in the shoreline residential area, there's the buffer and then there, or the, yeah, the buffer, and then there's like a setback, which is like, I think, between fifteen and twenty-five feet, depending on where you are, but there's a mechanism for reducing that setback if you do some enhancement within the buffer. So, it's a twenty-foot buffer, but then on top of that, you have maybe a twenty-five-foot setback, so it's a forty-five-foot space. You can reduce that setback, I think, down to five feet, something like that, if you do some significant improvements in the buffer area. Okay. And, we're doing the high points, but the information on that, if you wanted to look at what those actual numbers are, on page sixty-three of the gap analysis. And our emphasis really was looking at, because this is where the patterns are, at residential buffers specifically, and then also introducing some more compatible buffer for other parks and non, and recreation uses. Sort of to, again, help with that designing parks based on existing conditions and still allowing for appropriate public access and, you know, use of the park. Okay.
So-
This one, actually, I was wondering, um, and so, some cities have, are problematic.
it over to the next meeting? Okay.
And it's just one city gets a, um-
We have a different public streets plan, and-
I don't know, have a class for this, and we have a different public streets plan, and-
All right. Thank you. So that satisfies the elements of the agenda? Are there any announcements? New business? There's some questions about the upcoming meetings? How many meetings do you think we'll need to satisfy this item on the docket? Is that something we, we were talking about before in terms of August and September?
No. So I think what we're thinking is that your meetings in August, if on, we're going to have a list of sort of follow-up policy questions to get some more specific direction on some of these things in the gap analysis. If that work could be finished on August seventh, then we wouldn't meet on the twenty-first. If we need both of those August meetings to finish that, we can do that as well. Once that direction is received, then we'll come back with proposed amendments, and I would expect it would take time through September and potentially into October to look at those, and then we'd need to hold the public hearing. So I would not, myself, anticipate that this would be, this will be the rest of the year, I would expect, that we would be working with this, and we also need to fold in the, excuse me, the information from the focus groups.
Right. My, my understanding is that we may have trouble getting a quorum for a couple of meetings in September-
Mm-hmm.
-because of people's schedules, what I've heard about their schedules. So that would put more emphasis on having at least two meetings in August, right?
Well, it, it depends on where you are in the process.
How far we get, right.
If you finish policy direction, then we have to go away and develop code amendments, and that's going to be a lengthy, probably multi-week process. So, if you're finished on the seventh, there's no need to have a meeting, the second meeting in, in August. If you're not finished, of course, that would be the case, and then we would be working on it in September.
Sounds like you think it's likely we'd do it in two meetings, though, give you the direction you need.
It could be, yeah, I don't know.
And if you needed, you know, if we couldn't hold, if we didn't have a quorum for the first September meeting, I think it'd be September fifth.
Mm-hmm.
That wouldn't really severely set us back on our timeline, it sounds like.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Regardless of whether you finish on the seventh or the twenty-first, it's going to take some time-
Right.
-to do the staff work, to put this together.
Right. So it might actually dovetail a little bit.
Right.
Okay, anything else? All right, I think Bridget has iPads, right? So after we adjourn, I guess we can swap out our iPads. All right. Thanks, Amy and Lisa and the staff. With that, I adjourn this meeting.